Okay, I would like to call the order, the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting Tuesday, July 26th to order at 7:05 PM. Sorry, we had a couple of technical difficulties. First order or first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We've got two, we've got June 28th and July 7th. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at them and read them? I know that we had some edits come back already. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Hold on.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I looked at the minutes of June 28th and it said that I abstained on voting for approving the minutes of May 31st, which I honestly don't remember doing. But I was also five minutes late to that meeting and I, the minutes show that I was in like 7:05 and you had begun the meeting at 7:03. And I actually, I called Lisa because I was thinking, you know, I don't remember abstaining, I don't know why I would have. And I actually called Lisa over the weekend or earlier this week to find out, you know, what did she remember? Because I thought maybe I'm losing it. So, so I don't know if that's correct. I don't remember abstaining. I mean, if somebody else says I did, then I'll take their word for it. And I'm guessing that maybe it was because I just wasn't there yet. So that may be corrected.
I was gonna say, after Jim and I talked, I just kind of, when I was looking at the minutes, thought, oh, well, if Jim was there, which the minute said he was via Zoom, why would he not have voted? And I wanted to account for whatever it is he didn't. I thought, oh, it must have been a meeting he wasn't at. But after we discussed it, I think I sort of remember that because he wasn't there, we said, well, we can still approve it because we have the quorum. But I don't know.
Are we talking June 28th here?
Yes.
Yes.
June 28th, I have, I have Jim not voting.
I know, but I think we should record something to indicate why, because he was, just say, he did not, I would like the minutes to reflect what happened, which is, he arrived late and therefore was not included in the vote. Do you know what I'm saying? Just for the record.
Yeah, so it's not that he abstained, it's just, he wasn't, he wasn't here when we voted, he was absent during the vote.
Yes, and I just sort of thought, oh, I guess he wasn't there. But I wanted to be sure that the minutes reflected all of the people that were there and what they did. And I didn't remember either, frankly.
Yeah, because I mean, abstaining, I mean, I know there are times I've abstained from approving, but that's because those were meetings that I wasn't at. And I think the May 31st meeting, I'm trying to remember, I wasn't physically present, but I was there by Zoom, which was permissible under the law at that time. So I can't, I can't think of any reason why I would have abstained. I honestly don't remember doing it. I think, you know, what Lisa came up with as we talked through and what she just said is, I probably just wasn't there yet.
Yeah, we, I remember Lisa, or I'm sorry, Natalie looked at me too. Yeah, you just weren't here when we did because it was the very first thing on the, on the agenda.
Hey, can you share the screen? I just, I changed the minutes.
Yep.
Not that it's a biggie, but you never know. It's important that it be accurate.
Yes.
Yep, you can, you can share, Mike.
Okay, so here I entered in, this is June 28th. And McCully arrived late and did not vote. And I put here McCully arrived late, did not vote.
Okay.
I think.
A comment period. I don't know about the public comment period. We had begun the public comment.
Yeah, we had already begun the public comment period when you were, when you were in your air.
Okay, so he didn't vote in either. And I didn't pick that up, obviously. So, okay.
Okay, okay. So then I will entertain a motion to approve the June 28th minutes as amended.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Lisa.
Oh, second.
Second by Pat, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And then there are the July 7th minutes. Did anyone have any updates to those?
No.
Jim, anything?
No.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to the July 7th minutes as written. Motion by Pat.
I will second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. So this is an opportunity for anyone to bring up any item that is not something that's already on the agenda for this evening.
Yeah, I'm Carla Varso, and I'm here as an observer for the community party.
Hey, Carla. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move to close the public comment period.
Motion by Lisa.
I'll second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first item on the agenda was going to be the, to continue the public hearing for special permit number 2022-4575. McGuire Chevy Cadillac is looking to update their existing building with site improvements. They're not going to be here, right, Mike?
That is correct. Barrett Smith got ahold of me, I believe, Wednesday or so, or just before I put out, or just after I put out the agenda, and said that, you know, once a month is probably going to be good for them with all the, all the material that they're trying to gather up and to give Saratoga a little chance to catch up with the prince and everything.
Okay, so we can move on to the next item. So the next item on the agenda is to open a public hearing for subdivision number 2022-4592. Sean and Rachel Ryan, owners of 77 Graham Road, tax parcel number 46.1-1-6.24, are proposing to subdivide their 8.875 acre lot. The proposed parcel two would be 20,043 square feet or .46 acres and would have 100 feet of frontage along Dart Drive. The existing parcel one would then contain the remaining 8.415 acres. Okay, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to open the public hearing for subdivision number 2022-4592.
Will we open it?
Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mike, do you want to kick us off with any information about this?
It's a little bit of deja vu. If, let me pull up screen up here. You remember the Ryans were in and they subdivided this parcel last time we were, I think, the last couple meetings. This time they are looking to subdivide the other parcel that connects to Dart Drive. Everything on that parcel, including frontage and square footage, conforms to village code, or village zoning, I'm sorry. I don't really see any issue with this, as I didn't see any issue with the last one. I do have all of the mailings as required by village code. That's kind of all I really have for you.
Okay. Sean, was there anything that you wanted to add?
No, the only thing I'd say is, I know this is deja vu. We have no intention of subdividing our lot any further. It's just the two lots on Dart Drive, so nothing really else to add.
Okay, questions from the board members?
No.
Anything you wanted to share, Natalie?
No.
Okay, so as usual, we do keep public hearings open for more than one, one meeting. And so, Mike, I assume that this has, when they had the survey done last time, this piece of property was probably also surveyed at the same time, or there's a separate survey to verify the, the frontage and everything and acreage?
I don't know whether they were done at the same time or not, but this is a stamp survey. I'm sure that Jamie will get me another one for, if you go to approve it next week, your next meeting to sign.
So again, we do keep public hearings open for at least two meetings. Lisa, did you have something?
Actually, I was just thinking, I don't have the code book with me. And I should, I honestly didn't kind of reflect that this was a new subdivision. So normally it's subdivision plus one is minor. And then what is the limitation again on if you?
A total, a total of four or three years.
Okay, thanks. Okay, just, that was my only thought, as long as.
Yeah, I asked Mike the same thing, just because I was curious about it too. So, okay. Well, then Sean, yeah, if you do have any information, Sean, to add before the next meeting, just get in touch with Mike and otherwise we'll, we'll plan on having you on the agenda at the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item was going to be to continue the public hearing for the final plat of cluster subdivision proposal number 2021-4464 by Beer Properties. They've decided to wait until the next meeting or a subsequent meeting to come, so we are not going to discuss that tonight. So the next item on the agenda is review of special permit number 2021-4516 Lansing Meadows.
Mike?
Yeah. Go ahead, Brent, sorry.
I have a question for the planning board relative to Beer project.
Yeah.
It's just, so in reviewing their latest set of plans, I noticed that they have a, I think this has been a question for them in the past. There's, there's sidewalks which are within the village standard right of way, and they're going to be part of the dedication to the village. And then there's trails or some version of it that's going to be dedicated to the village to remain or to be the responsibility of the village. And then there's what I think they're calling HOA walkways, which is walkways that are going to remain on their property. So the, the part of the layout, which is called Loop Road, has one of those HOA sidewalks, or I'm sorry, HOA walkways up through the middle in back of half of the units. But on the outside of the Loop Road, the current plan doesn't show for any other form of pedestrian way, either a sidewalk within the right of way or any one of those other walkway trail kind of things. And I just wanted to get a, an idea from you if that's consistent with what you were thinking, or if that was not what you were thinking. And so that we could then communicate with them over, you know, before the next meeting, so that if that, if that's something that needs attention or not.
At some point, I'm sorry, Lisa, go ahead, you raise your hand, I would.
I was gonna say, my recollection was that on the Loop Road, we did not feel at this point that there was a need to put in the sidewalk, but we wanted them to indicate for the future that a sidewalk would be possible. Is that what everybody else remembers?
That's, that's what I recall is, we said, yeah, that it wouldn't be required, they were going to have that path right there through the middle. But that for future expansion, we did want, I don't know, I don't know if I remember us wanting it indicated, or if we wanted at least, you know, it to be designed so one could be put in. We, we did say though, yes, we wanted to want to go south, or I don't know what direction is on the, on the sheet that you just had up, Mike. But we did want one to go down towards what would be Phase Three of Lansing Trails, or Lansing Trails Three?
Yes, we, we also talked about, you have every right to have a, an escrow for the sidewalk that go around that Loop Road.
Yep.
And I, I think that's important to do.
Yep.
So that's a good point, Brent. And, and to add to that, Brent, I did receive an email from David today that he wants to get together with, with John, you and myself.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so if you do meet before the next meeting, I would, I would bring that up because that is something that we had discussed at the, at the, at a previous meeting.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sure, sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand there, Brent.
That's okay.
Okay, so then the next item on the agenda is the review of special permit number 2021-4516 Lansing Meadows. As per the conditions of resolution number 2021-4516 adopted on December 13th, 2021, the planning board will review the progress of the Lansing Meadows development. Mike, did you want to kick us off with that? And I do know that Eric's here tonight to, to provide those updates.
I mean, you can, if you'd want to, we can go right down through the conditions. I'm finding it here so I can pull it up. If that's something that everybody wants to do, I can give you an update on what is, what has happened to, with that project. The four buildings in Phase One are 99% done. I walked through them this past week. As a matter of fact, Building Two, I issued a temporary CFC for, someone was looking to move in that, into that one unit. The other three buildings, they do meet code. And as far as site work goes, it's been very tough to get any lawn to grow anywhere, even if you had an established lawn, you had to grow. Some of it is coming in. The first building looks pretty good. I went through the sidewalk situation. The sidewalk going down Oak Crest is 95 to 97% done. There's a, there's a few items that John Courtney and his, you know, would like to view or need to talk to Eric about. The A1 sidewalk is completed. John has signed off on that. Phase one landscaping is missing four trees. Actually, it's missing five trees. It's missing, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, we go over there, four trees that are between Building Two and Oak Crest. I think, Lisa, I think you had brought those up and wanted those in there. I don't know whether they're lilacs or what species they are. And then there's one pine tree that is missing between Building Two and the firehouse. Eric has, since I issued a temporary CFC, Eric has established an escrow for $1,000 for the trees that are, that are not in there at this point. So Mike, it's up to you. If you want to go down through, I can bring it up on the screen. If you want to go down through all of the conditions to 4516, if you want to do it that way, however, the planning board would like to do this.
Yeah, let's, let's run down through the, if you want to share those conditions up on the screen, Mike, we can run down through them. Eric, if you wanted to comment, if you stand at the podium, there's a microphone up there, it'll probably pick you up better.
Yeah.
But yeah, if you, if you want, and you can look at either.
Can I comment on the trees or wait till the end?
You can wait till the end. Yeah, Mike and I chatted about it, it's, yeah, but we can talk about it. So yeah, do you want to, do you want to start there with A, Mike?
And Brent Cross, make sure you pipe in on some of the stuff is stormwater and conditions of site. All right, your condition A is a, basically your general condition, which could handle in the later stages. Condition B, is there anything that you'd like to comment on, Brent, as far as the stormwater condition down in that area?
Well, I would, I didn't read these conditions, but just as a general comment is that I haven't been over there much lately, so I would, you know, want to take a look. But I, did you just mention a moment ago, something about germination? Was that a topic?
Yeah.
Yeah, because at some point in time, it's probably independent of this process, but it's kind of coincidental timeline is that the, there's a stormwater management permit through D C, a notice of intent, that at some point in time, he's going to want to close that. And so we'll have to sign off on it from the village's perspective, and that, that germination is a, is a hard requirement in, in that sign off. So among all the other details, which I would say that due to the fact that over the winter time, they went into, what's the term? Shutdown mode, where they stabilized the site. There hasn't been any active weekly inspections been going on. So I guess at some point in time, I'll need to get plugged back in and do some inspections just to be able to give you as the planning board confirmation that he's met his village conditions, but at some point, so I can tell Mike that he can sign off on the MS4 certification.
At that point, we'll end up doing the N O T on that and signing off on the whole complete site, right, Brent?
That's right, yep.
See, for C, Eric, you did, did you, or did you not send in that NICE easement?
Yeah, and I say it was all done.
Okay, and we're still working on the sidewalk easements, correct?
Yeah, I think now the sidewalk easements and the street easements are with you. We sent those in.
He has reviewed and sent along his comments, very minor comments to John on the sewer. Again, I spoke to John on the sidewalk today. He said he was going to look at it tomorrow.
Like, we sent those in like early June or something. They're out there, but we don't.
Yeah, I think Peter's been more looped in on that process than I.
Okay, condition D is a standard condition with the village. Condition E, prior to this certificate of compliance being issued for Phase Two, this is actually going to be a future condition. Condition F was a landscaping plan submitted and approved that was done. Condition G was setting up the escrow for the sidewalk, 152,859. That was set up also, that easement, or I'm sorry, the escrow. H, that is the sidewalk for the A1 section, which John Courtney has signed off on that. I is a escrow established for $15,000 for Phase Two of the landscaping. Obviously, that hasn't been done yet. J, written approval for Village of Lansing Superintendent Public Works on the plan for the sidewalk that had to be done before it was started. K, what's the situation with that? Eric and Brent, as far as water consumption, has that all been okay? Is this behind us, or is this something that needs to be addressed?
So my understanding of it is, is water consumption was a matter of counting of the dwelling units and that sewer units were issued for all of the dwelling units. Then the Village of Kyuga Heights Super DPW has to sign off on the inspection cards. And I guess, I'm not sure where, where Eric is at with getting those cards signed off.
Yeah, we've got, so Brent, that's done before we get our permits, right? The water consumption calculations that we do, that that's all part of the permits, I thought, my application.
That was part of the permits, but it's, I'm just taking the, the one last step farther, which is, what is the status of signing?
We've got to take, we've got to take the cards over. I guess it's the final step.
As far, as far as this sewer permit goes in general, John does sign that off and he takes it over to you, Brent, or you guys work together as far as, as signing that off, right?
Well, John, John signs off for the Village of Lansing and, and Mike Weiss signs off for the Village of Kyuga Heights. So Mike oftentimes will sign off on John's advice. So the two of them can work together on it.
All right, L, written approval by the Village of Kyuga Heights on the sewer system. That's pretty much with the finalization of the sewer permit, correct, Brent?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. M is taken care of for the G M, G M L 239. N, deadline for completion of the foundation work for Phase Two, Buildings Eight and Fourteen is today. That has not been started. O, the completion of Phase One, I reviewed where we're at with the buildings. The building's 99% done. P, deadline for completion of Phase Two, that is future. Q, this is the board's discretion on what they, what they could possibly do if any of these conditions are not met. R is pretty much done, it's just the criteria. S, the roadway is one way. T, all spaces, all open space for closed development, should be graded landscaped and maintained by the applicant. That is also something that the future that we'll wind up getting an HOA agreement whenever that happens. U is condition I mentioned earlier about a temporary certificate of occupancy. And I'll repeat that, you know, A1 sidewalk was complete, and there were some products that were, there were some trees missing for Phase One landscaping, which Eric has put down $1,000 in escrow. And so there is a temporary certificate of compliance for Building Two, which is the first building that closes to the firehouse. And V is self-explanatory. That's all I got, Mike.
Um, do you want to, actually, I'll tell you what, Eric, I'm going to try to be fancy here. Okay, the camera's actually looking at you. Now, did you want to provide an update or comment on anything? I know that you wanted to, from the escrow, but any, just anything in general you want to share with the board?
A couple of things. And we've been, you know, pushing forward to get these done, trying to get their certificate of occupancy or the TCO well before now. We had a 76-year-old woman move in last week, on the 15th of July, which is great. She's been, she wanted to come in, we couldn't get in her earlier. We had some issues with the private water system, the backflow preventers, just all the testing that we had to do. It took a lot longer than we thought. We finally had to bring representatives to the company and to figure out why it wasn't working with Bolton Point and others. That finally got done. So we had some issues that we couldn't get a TCO, you know, we were trying to do that early June. In order, the June, we needed to start our foundations because we had a July 26th deadline. July 26th is also relevant because we need to get the buildings enclosed before winter because of frost. So we didn't meet those. We couldn't start in June because we had the other ones done first. It's hard to take money from the bank and say, we're going to build more when the first ones aren't online yet. So we had an issue with that. Unfortunately, we didn't make it. We'd like to talk to the board about that. But we're, we're getting a lot of great response. People are coming through, they're seeing them. The buildings are done. You know, Mike says they're 99%. They're done. We've got some blinds we've got to put up. But the water works in every room, the toilets, the heat, that's been working since, you know, late May. So they're fully functional. We just couldn't allow people living on them until we passed all the requirements that the village, you know, in order to have people inside them. The one thing I did want to address was the landscape and there are five trees missing. One, we had a pine tree, they just didn't have another one. This is a huge, you know, contractor up in our area, he didn't have one. The other four were lilacs, a bit of lilac trees, Lisa, that we, those were added the very last meeting we had for the approval. And the thought process was that somebody living there is not going to want to see the road. Well, the woman who chose this unit, she chose that unit specifically, she just had some, she's recovering from cancer, she had a lot of things going on, she really can't be exposed to the outdoors. She chose this unit because she wants to see out the windows to the trees that are across there for bird watching. You know, so I told her we had some trees. I wanted to come to board to see if we're able to not plant those because this is the reason she chose this exact unit. She had a choice for any one of them. Again, those were put in at the last meeting because the thought process was that people are living there and not going to want to see the road. And it's just almost the opposite, you know, for our first tenant in there. But as soon as we have the ability to get the other pine tree that will go in, and if the board still requires those to go in, we will install them, but they're not in there for a reason. So then the other thing, you know, the timeframe, we haven't met the deadline, you know, I would request, you know, we need to get these other ones open, occupied. We can't meet the timing because when I lost my foundation, I lost my framers, I lost my roofers, I lost, you know, and they're hard to get anyhow. We have them on a tight schedule, but once we didn't meet the foundation date, I lost those guys. So I would request, if we could, if the board would be willing to entertain, you know, pushing those dates out, you know, one year, so we can start these again. You know, one year so we can start these again, you know, next spring.
Um, so let's, let's table the, that, I think that really is um kind of the one outstanding condition on here that isn't met. You know, everything else is either done or, you know, practically done minus some paperwork. So I, I honestly, I do think you've made. A, a ton of progress since we last met, so um there is just that one outstanding item. Um, and you know, the deadline for the completion of the, the um, the foundation work, so. Um, before we talk about extending the permit, because there is a process for that, um, that was built into the agreement. I wanted to ask the board members, um, if they had questions or um. Thoughts, um, Lisa, did you have anything you wanted to share or ask Eric?
I think I'll wait till I hear from everyone else first.
Okay. Um, Jim?
Um. No, I don't, although I'm wondering if the foundation, or if the deadline needs to be pushed out by an entire year. I mean, we still have a number of months of relatively climate weather ahead of us.
Okay. Okay, um, Mike or Natalie, was there anything that you wanted to, to bring up or share?
If you're looking for a year on the foundation work. Then the deadline for P, which is completion for phase two, is October thirty one, twenty twenty three. Are you looking for a similar year and a half from the completion of foundation to completion of homes?
Well, it's the, they're kind of all linked together. Um, I was just asking for a year on each date that we have. I mean, because it's like if we started, if we started, you know, end of May next year, then we'll be able to meet. The July timeframe, then you've got the, all the framing, roofing, everybody else, wow, thereafter, you can't really jumpstart it any faster. And the issue is starting, even starting now would put us well into winter conditions if I could get people to do it, and it's hard to get people. Even when I had them locked up.
And to Jim's point, what would be the issue in doing the foundations now? To be, to wait over winter?
Yeah, can't let them sit with the frost. They've gotta be protected.
Okay. Mike, is that true?
I mean, there's a way, there is ways to protect.
Can't even hang a frame, so I don't know.
No, there, there are ways to protect them. Uh, you can blanket them over the winter. Um, that type of deal, that's, that's personal preference. I can't. I cannot uh hold anything against somebody who, who is thinking the, the way Eric is thinking and then also I can't. I can't say that someone put it in and blanket it or that's wrong either, so I really have. I've seen it done both ways. My, I have a concern that um. You know, if, if we could push the date out that far and then it doesn't happen at that point, what, what do we? What's gonna stop them pushing out some more? And then again and again, so I don't know what, how the board thinks about. Having some type of, not, not so much leverage, but some type of. Holding something in. In play.
Right, so I.
Does permit an additional escrow?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so I guess Eric, if, say that. I know that everything's getting pushed back, but say that you could, say that you had a crew to start the foundation tomorrow. Or say that you had the crew to start the foundation. You know, four months ago, and then you had the crews to do all the, all the building, you know, would you, it seems like you would have normally been able to meet this deadline if not for all the delays. So I guess one of the questions that I would have for the board is, knowing that, you know, potentially, you know, given everything you would have been able to start. Um, what do we think about, you know, putting in place an escrow for the foundations for those remaining buildings? Um, so for phase two buildings eight and fourteen, putting, you know, asking for an escrow for, for the foundations. Lisa?
Okay, so. Um. I, what part of Q says that um. In the sole discretion, if it's provided no reasonable basis, so you're saying your reasonable basis for delay was. Essentially that you didn't have the funds to go forward with it until you could start renting your current properties, is, is that what I was? Heard you say?
Lisa, we, we had four buildings out there, you know, and I do.
I know, I know that Eric, but my question is, so is, what is the reasonable basis for just, for the delay? I'm just curious.
Uh, the, the, the delay was, we didn't have the other buildings open where we could start having occupancy in them. The bank wants to see people living in these units. I mean, you're not gonna go further out. I mean, these should have been open, you know, a while ago.
And no kidding, no kidding. I can certainly agree with that, that it should have been a while ago, but what I'm saying is. When we set up this special permit, you knew about this deadline. And it didn't, you agreed to it, and it didn't have to do really with the other buildings being ready for occupancy. This is what you agreed to. And so, um. The other thing that we put in there was that if you did not do this. That we could start landscaping what is actually an eyesore for our village, this open kind of raw. Territory, so um, would you like to comment on that or let us know how you feel about that? If we were to landscape that, take the fifteen thousand dollars and landscape it. Because if you're talking about over a year before you pour the foundations, there's a real good chance it could be two years. And then. And I personally am not willing to drive by that on a daily basis and look at that. And I'm not the only person that feels that way, so I'm just wondering. You know, that is an option that we have as a board. That's what we put in there.
I, I understand that, and if, and if you want us to put the landscaping in. I mean, the money is sitting there. We can go ahead and do it. I mean, it's just, you know, again, uh. I'm not trying to make excuses. Lisa, we've got a lot of people coming through. They like the units. I think once we get them filled, more people are gonna wanna be there, where you wanna get them built as fast as we can. I'm not trying to slow it down by any means. I mean, we liked, I mean, now you just see what's out there. And I think once the people start seeing, I'm, I think we're gonna have a, a pretty good demand. We're gonna wanna get more built as fast as possible. It's just that right now I can't get the labor to do it. I can't get commitment to do it. Um, I missed the window, even, even if I did, it probably would have been tough with some of my labors because. My contractors, they did it before, committed other houses. They were trying to bring more people on to make this happen, so we, we were pushing the envelope. But we're, we're, I mean, the, the infrastructure's in, everything's in. It's in my best interest to do it as quickly as possible. I, I'm only asking because the foundations, the slab that we're pouring. You know, it's, we can't let it sit during the winter time, so we can start as soon as we can, and then we'll move forward. I, I'm not happy about being that farther out with, with six more units could be online, being renting with all the infrastructure. Now, it, again, we've, as you said, we, we've made a lot of progress, but we didn't realize were all the issues we have. Getting the approvals to get people inside between the water, the sewer, there's just so many things you've gotta get approved. Before somebody can move in, and those were, you know, when we made this agreement in December, we knew we could get the buildings done. But it was all the approvals that to get somebody to move in, it couldn't happen. These buildings have been sitting there, done. Done. We could have moved in, you know, in, in May, in June.
They couldn't move in because everything wasn't completed here. I would like to correct the record.
Well, the water.
Excuse me, so I, I would just like to ask, um, in terms of some of these other things like the sign. Uh, from the Village of Kuga Heights and stuff, do we actually have that in writing yet, Mike Scott? Do we actually have physical? Papers to show that that's happened, Brent, thank you.
Go ahead. He, we, Eric has uh signed off sewer card units. For each of, I'm sorry, sewer connection permits for each of the uh dwelling units. Normally, that's considered the end of the process in terms of documentation. If you felt like you wanted. Uh, a direct communication from the Village of Kuga Heights to the Village of Lansing. Like, that's doable, that's not a problem, but in general, usually the, the issuance of the sewer. Uh, connection permits are, is the documentation that verifies that that's been completed.
So the cards that you were referring to from Mike Weiss, that's kind of a given?
Well, the, that's as, as I think that, you know, if it was. Uh, Eric or Mike pointed out, that's the completion of them. I think the condition was, in the, the planning board condition was that the units be. Uh, available and allocated from uh the Village of Kuga Heights. Uh, completion of those is usually a matter of the certificate of occupancy process. Again, uh, I know the work's been done. It's a matter of. I think John might have some questions for Eric and uh. I believe that if, if he satisfies John, that he satisfies Mike Weiss and therefore. Um, the sewer units will be signed, the sewer connection permits will be signed off. Uh, by the Village of Kuga Heights to Mike uh Scott for final certificate of occupancy.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. I just think, given the history of this situation, I would really like to be sure that we have everything. In writing that we've requested be in writing, that's all.
And Lisa, part of the um, of going through a, a temporary C of C. Uh, one of the conditions is for John Courtney to sign off on the location of. Of the outside where the event and the uh trap is. And what I do is I normally, well, not normally, every time I go to John Courtney, I say, you see any issues with this, any problem? Be issuing a temporary C of C as far as sewer goes, and he'll either let me know yes or no.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did you have other, other comments, Lisa, or thoughts?
I'm, I basically am agreeing with Jim that I just. You know, I mean, we keep going from. Three years to ten years to twelve years, now we're up to fifteen years, I mean. Forgive me, I just. It, it's just. I'm at a loss as to what will motivate. The completion of this project.
The motivation is to get them open. I mean, I, I have every motivation to do that, because.
That's why I don't understand, Eric, why. You know, when we, when we set this up, these are the same foundations your other four buildings are. I would think that your contractor you could talk to. If you had set it up on the day after we came up with this resolution, it just seems. I don't know, there must be something else going on that we're unaware of, I guess. That would make that not happen, but it doesn't matter. We're here today, so we have to decide what to do.
And so, so I, I will agree with Lisa, right? And I mean, obviously, you've, you've been to the board quite a bit over the past. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's actually a decade, but it seems like it, it's been, it's been quite a few years and. Um, it's been extension after extension, and right now we're sitting talking about another extension. Um, and so, you know, if you look at Q, um, there is a. Um, you know, there's a provision that wasn't met, so. And that provision is, and the, you know, the completion of the foundation work for phase two buildings eight and fourteen was not completed by today. So um, the, the board has some actions there um that we can take. We can um. You know, require some additional funds into escrow, maybe that is enough to. You know, in, ensure that they are completed as soon as they possibly can. I know that you're saying you want to complete them as soon as you possibly can. Um, but the village needs assurances that's actually gonna happen. Escrow is one way to do that. Another option is one of the things there, right? We can, um, we can withdraw the, the building permit. Um, so that's an option we have. You asked about an extension. Um, if you want an extension on the special permit, there is a provision in place to request that, and I think Natalie has.
You need to request an amendment to the previously approved special permit, so you need to submit a request in writing to Mike. And then the board will consider it at the next meeting.
Okay.
So tonight, we can't, so tonight, I think what we could do is we could require an escrow or we could withdraw the um permit. Um. In, in, in lieu of that, if you want to request an extension, that's something that we can't address tonight. That's something that you have to provide in writing, and we could take up at the next meeting.
Let me do that, if I could just ask. I, I know there's frustration with this. Again. I can't do it any faster. I mean, to put the money in escrow, it's just money I'm paying interest on, but I can't touch it, you know, until next May. I mean, I'm not trying to delay it. I would like to get them open as soon as I can so I can rent them, because now that I get, I get a T C O. And all the other things are completed. Then my best interest to do that as fast as possible. And, and again, I put a lot of escrows up and I'm just asking the board. Look, I've been in front of you a lot of times, and I know there's a lot of frustration, but there's things that. I didn't think would happen when I made this agreement. As far as getting in for my T C O, I thought, okay, we'll do the water. We'll do the sewer, we'll do everything it's in, and we'd be fine, but we weren't fine.
And I understand that, um, and again, you know, our role is to look out for the best interests, best interests of the village. And ensure that projects like this are complete and do what we need to do, especially according to. You know, these specific provisions that we put in last time, that you came for, you know, to, to extend your special permit, so.
Not asking for the permit for the next two buildings right now, because I ca, I can't. So I, I'll make the amendment, I'll write the amendment to Mike, and I'll be at the next plane, we're meeting them.
Mike, what's, what's the earliest, you know, you, you've, you've done this a lot too. What's the earliest that a foundation can go in in upstate New York? Or in Ithaca, half a mile away from Village Hall?
Well, I mean, you can, as long as you can get into the ground, you can get a foundation in. I mean, once, once the frost starts hitting the ground.
Yep.
Um, I've, they've been put in in winter before. We've done them in winter before, but like you said, it's builder's preference. I mean, how, it depends on how aggressive you wanna be with it.
If, if, you know, Eric's indicated that he wants to, you know. Request an extension of this, what happens between now and um at the next meeting? If we, when we review that request and, and make a decision, if we don't make a decision tonight?
What do you mean, what happens? I'm, I'm not.
So, 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 you know, we could make a decision tonight to withdraw the building permit. Um.
I don't have a building.
What, what if, what if we wait until next week or next, next meeting, rather, for Eric's written request? Is there anything that happens in the interim between now and then, or that we need to be aware of or not?
No, I mean, uh, you request it, and i- at this point, I'm recommending that you uh. You look for the uh escrow for the uh, for the foundation. Um, what you do with it, whether you extend the time limit.
Yep.
Um, to start it, yes, I'm not sure that I would extend the. Completion limit of next October, because if everything you've got from now until. You put the foundation in to get things all set up, so you can line it all right up, it should be able to be done in four or five months.
With a home, Mike?
Well, but this, this is, like I said, I'm. We built a certain way, and that's just how.
But, but what, could I just ask, I mean, Eric, you, you keep saying that you're really anxious to get these buildings occupied. And going forward, and yet we're suggesting get the foundations in now. Mike is saying it's builder's preference. I believe that if I were in your situation. And I wanted to be sure that I had these done by next year to fix for occupancy, I would consider doing the foundations. Absolutely as soon as possible. And it, it seems, you know, you had from December until July to set this up with someone, and. If you were to set it up now, um, who knows if, like I said, it seems to me it's the same foundations. You've got the plans, you've got. I, I would assume you have the same contractor, I don't know, but it, it, it just, something isn't sitting right with me. That you're anxious to do this, and yet you're delaying getting these buildings done. It just doesn't.
I'm just.
Logical to me.
Uh, I'm just, look, I'm sharing that before we had them, if we put the foundations in, we've gotta get them enclosed. We can't get them enclosed in time, and before we got them enclosed, we put heat in them, because we were able to get the insulation, and we got them through the winter that way. But I'm being told by my contractors, you can't put the foundation in. You're gonna expose yourself if you have frost. You expose the foundation, he goes, if you don't start it, if you don't get them in now, and we don't get the thing that closed. You're exposed. That's what I'm, that's, that's how we did the last ones. That's what I'm being told on these, but my.
I will share, Eric, that I had a house built here late in the year, and the foundation was poured late in the year. And I specifically remember the contractors putting up framing while it was snowing, and they were on my roof with ice while it was not sealed with windows or anything, and they were able to do that. Um, I know it's slightly different probably with a larger um foundation, but I know that. Um, there are contractors that work here through the year, um, one of them being mine, so.
Another one being us, that's what we do.
Yeah, no.
This is the problem I'm having, Eric, unfortunately, and you know, it's just given the history of this whole situation, this is really just. It's not sitting well with, as you can see, I'm not the only one that doesn't sit well with. And it's just, what, what is it you want? You want us to? And it's just, what what is it you want? You want us to now delay a year and a half again?
No, I just I just want to be able to start my foundations as soon as the frost is gone next spring and I'll.
Gone now.
I I understand.
It's been gone.
I'm not, Lisa, I'm not, I'm not a builder. Again, my guys who built this, we've got two large pads. We're doing two buildings. He's telling me that you're not going to get them in closing time. You can't do it. On top of that, though, to get people now to do things. I mean, if if I get a foundation guy, if I can get my foundation guy back, I don't know when that even be. And then let them sit there exposed without knowing when my framer can come.
Have you looked into, have you looked into other contractors or anything?
No, I've I've got the group that I've used, Mike. I don't know any of the contractors down.
Have you reached out to your foundation person at all for his availability?
The one foundation guy we have is not available, but we can always.
So there's only one person that could do this?
No, no, but the foundation guy that we had that did them is not available. And because we missed the date, I haven't pursued the other ones. Because I was.
Maybe that's part of the problem is maybe, see, again, I think we're back to Eric, unfortunately, whether this project is really a priority and it's really hard to sort out at this point. Is there a money issue? Is there a just a lack of commitment to the project? You haven't really been very straightforward with the board for almost twelve plus years. And it's just getting very tiring for all of us. And so I will just defer to the chair to decide whether we're going to wait till next time. But and to Mike and I think his his advice on, you know, you keep saying how, well, these escrows are a problem. We would not be requiring these escrows if we didn't have the history that we have with you, unfortunately.
Frankly, the escrow seemed to be working as the sidewalk is now done.
Exactly.
The sidewalk was done months ago. We put it in as soon as we could. It's been done for three months.
Money was tied up in escrow account. You don't think an escrow is enticing for you to get work done if you can't get your money until the work is done?
No, we need the sidewalk in to get our TCO.
And you had however much money tied up in escrow. Saying it was the only reason why you did the sidewalk, but it's certainly a motivating factor if you have funds tied up in escrow pending completion of a project.
And we got it done as fast as we could. I'm telling you with. I can't.
I point.
Let me, let me, why don't, why don't I bring, I'll bring my contractor in next meeting and we'll have the discussion and I'll make the application to you.
And I want to be clear, just because you make the application, doesn't mean it has to be.
It is, it is an application to decide whether or not we extend this. On top of that, I I am, you know, if if we're going to entertain this, right, we we could, we could say, no, you've not met the deadline. Here's what we can do under Q and we can just stop things now. You can write a request to extend it, which we could consider. Again, like Natalie said, it's not guaranteed. We can consider. You can, you can bring in your contractor, you can bring in a concrete guy, you can bring in three concrete guys. I would, you know, do your homework. However, you know, with all that said, I would strongly urge us to, you know, require an escrow be set up for the foundations if, you know, that's how I feel.
Can I come in next, can I make the request? You will come in next meeting and talk to you about it?
Yes, under village of Lansing code. Previously approved special permit.
So in 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 the interim, though, I mean, I don't know what happens with this permit, Mike. And I guess before even that question, other board members, Eric can, Eric can come to the next meeting. He can write a request. Do we want to require an escrow for the foundations for the other two buildings?
I would vote yes.
Jim?
It seems that the escrow approach seems to have been effective based on the discussion between Natalie and Eric a few moments ago. So I'd be in favor of it.
It doesn't accelerate. I can't go any, it doesn't accelerate what I'm trying to do.
Well, while it might not accelerate it, it will delay it the shortest amount of time possible and it gives it gives the village very evident, you know, proof that you're going to do this. And if you're not going to do it, we're going to do it or 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 something. I mean, there's a thing. So I I don't know what we need to do to require the escrow.
Special permit, we have to, you can require it right now and we'll draw up an escrow agreement and sign it. I think any, if you want an escrow agreement, it should be a condition of granting any amendment that you give.
And so I don't, I don't think we have the information to do that right now, but I think, Mike, can you, can you work with Eric to figure out what that, what that escrow amount would be for the foundations? Or Eric, can you provide, you know, proof of what it costs you for the foundations on the previous two buildings or the previous buildings that you have there? And that's something that we're going to want to see at the next meeting.
You also have to decide if you want to use the landscaping escrow to landscape.
Right. So that's, that's something that Lisa brought up, right? We can use the money that's currently currently in the escrow to landscape. We can make that decision tonight or we can wait.
Want to see maybe if Eric can speak to his contractor. Actually, it can be, if the foundations can be poured prior to winter, that might be a discussion you want to have with him and talk to people that could maybe lay the foundations other than the one person to see if it can be done prior to winter. And I think we should delay the decision.
Yeah, I don't think we should make that choice tonight, but it is likely to mention that is something we can do with the money that's currently in the escrow there. So I I would keep that in mind for the next meeting when Eric comes back. So I would be in touch with Mike Scott to get whatever information you need to get to him to be ready for the next meeting and make sure that you get a hold of him to get on the agenda for the next meeting. And also to make sure that, please, all the material is here on time because we're not going to accept material or information that you send, Mike, that we get the day of the meeting or the day before the meeting. It needs to be there. How many days, Mike?
I would need it a minimum of ten days beforehand.
So make sure that Mike has that information so that you can get it out. Yeah, ten days before the date of the next meeting. And so the next meeting is August eighth. So make sure that you have that information to him here sooner rather than later.
It's like in two days.
So it'd be the end of the week. I need it by the end of the week.
Mike or Natalie, or anything else you wanted to add?
Is there anything?
Sorry, go ahead.
I asked about the trees on the side of the home.
Well, we'll wait until next week, next time.
Yeah, the phase. So watch the birds.
Right, it's out her windows right there. That's the building she chose.
Of course, my, I would say that why don't we find a place somewhere else for them, but we can talk about that next time.
Yeah, I I would say absolutely. Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be there. It has to be on the property.
Well, the trees are put there.
So we can talk about, we can, we can talk about taking a look at the landscaping plan that was submitted and approved with those trees on them and where we could potentially move them somewhere else. Anything else, Mike or Natalie, that you wanted to run? Board members, Lisa or Jim? Okay, Eric, anything else? Okay, the next item on the agenda is other business. So review of the proposed tree conservation and replacement law.
Never heard of that.
I know, it's so weird. So thank you, Natalie, for putting all the effort into getting everything all cleaned up. Did everyone have a chance to? I know Natalie sent the email out a couple of days ago that had just a couple kind of questions slash thoughts on it. I don't know if people got it. Jen still get that. But Mike, Mike's coming out here.
I almost sent out something. I realized I was doing the track changes. The only thing that I wanted to look at was the the chart with the tree sizes and the shrubs and all that where I think it it was getting into the metric system, I guess. I I know, but I I'm looking at this and I said, so, because I had suggested, you know, oh, you can't have a tree less than four inches to someone's, it should be less than or greater than whatever. But he had six point one.
That was me and I'll explain why.
Didn't understand that.
Said four to six and six to eight. But what if it's six?
Right, which one does that fall under?
Which is why I said, I had corrected it at one point to say, so the existing tree is is less than four inches with zero, then the existing tree would be equal to or greater or or equal to, right, six to seven. And then the next one would be have to do less than or equal to. It just didn't make sense to me.
I'm not, you know, math words aren't my forte.
It's really hard to measure.
That's the point that I was trying to get at, that what happens if it's just six? So that's what I came up with, but open to your suggestion.
What did I just said? So if it's so that it's, oh, I didn't print it out because I keep printing out this stuff, I pages and pages. Well, I know what it was. So one was the existing, okay, I guess, could, could you just, is Mike, could Mike bring up? I didn't, I stupidly did not print it out because I just did not want to waste yet more paper, you know, trees and all. But what did I thought? I said, if it's less than four inches, then the next category he had said greater than four inches and I said equal, you know, four to six. And then it's greater than six to twelve.
This is what you had, yeah.
Yeah, because then after the four to six, Simon said, and maybe I was looking at the original one, because I could only find one version of this chart. Simon said six to twelve and then twelve to eighteen. So I was like.
Originally, he said greater than, you know. But the one I had was greater than, so I thought, oh, that's okay.
I don't know, I pulled this from like a Google, I couldn't access the Google Doc that he had.
At any rate, I thought, what the heck is six point one inches and what the heck is twelve point?
Just smaller than six. It's all the way at the bottom, like.
I I Googled it and I have to tell you. If the existing, so the next one is the existing tree is four to six. That's one. Then if it's great, can't you just say greater than six?
No, because then twelve is greater than six and eighteen is greater than six and.
Oh, I know what it is. So you go greater than six point zero to twelve inches. No.
Oh, perfect.
Good. Carla was a math major.
And I have a master's degree from MIT. The the fact is, if you just say four to six inches and, you know, and six to twelve inches and twelve to eighteen inches or whatever, nobody's going to be out there with with, you know, a millimeter measuring stick to say, oh, this one millimeter more than six. It's using pretty approximate. That's perfectly good enough, you know, for measuring trees. If you need greater precision, you can say less than, you can say, you know, less than six, you know.
And greater than.
Okay, it's the but that we don't have.
The reason I thought we should say, so in this case, it would be four to six is 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 one tree unit. And then I was thinking greater than six because otherwise they'd say, well, I've, my tree is six inches and I'd rather it counted as one point five instead of the one. So I said, well, make it greater than six to twelve point zero, right? And then greater than twelve point zero to eighteen point zero. I, you know, maybe you need.
I get it. I I I will amend.
It's just me, but I don't want, I want everybody to think that makes sense to them as well.
Point, if we wanted to do, you know, less than four inches, that's fine. If we wanted to do, you know,
Right.
Greater than or equal to four inches, that's fine, we can do.
Greater than equal to six.
I think that's what I had written to Simon.
Of course, she said you can, you can just do, you can do four to six, six to twelve, twelve to eighteen. And it's going to be, like she said, I don't think anyone's actually going to go out there with a ruler.
I I disagree. I really think people are going to try to say, yeah, but it's six.
I guess, given, given some of the cases that we've had, I guess people.
I'm just, I'm looking for trouble, you know?
So we could, we will. Yeah, 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 that's greater than equals. Yeah, so she's, she's putting in the greater than or equal, less than, greater than, greater than.
I don't really care at this point. I just don't want it to be six point one and twelve point one.
It was just the spirit of it.
If it's six point oh nine.
If if we use the metric system, it probably would work fine.
I thought that was really clever.
Is is, have we been misspelling superseding all this time?
I don't know. My, my word corrected it, so.
Where do you see, where's that?
It was whether a superseding with a C in the middle or.
Wow, I thought it was with a C.
It's actually either, but how, I don't know what our code does. What does our book say?
Well, this is what Microsoft Word said it was.
Jim says yes.
Is that what we've done the rest of our code is what I was really wondering? I guess we should be consistent with what our code is. Well, we can figure that. But other than that, I think I, those were the only things we have enforcement within there.
So, yeah, Natalie's updating that right now.
I I thought that was the only thing that honestly I thought needed a little attention.
It's like a basset hound outside.
Okay, that has been corrected.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, is it updated live? Oh, you're on the, oh, you're sharing the screen? Oh, oh, man, yeah, hang on that. I think. I don't know. I haven't looked, I haven't looked at Mike's. I was looking at Natalie's. We'll see if they match up. Well, at any rate, we'll fix them so they have the correct mathematical signs in front of them to solve this issue of people potentially going out and measuring trees very precisely. Like Lisa said, I really wouldn't be surprised.
I would, no, I, nothing surprises me anymore, unfortunately. Well, no, I'm still amazed at some of the surprises.
What else? You said, you said, Lisa, that was the only, only thing.
It really, really was. I mean, we've been through this a fair amount of time. I, you know, aside from the two things that we've discussed, which is we need to really kind of rethink sort of a parking lot situation and a and a residential, you know, but I really am anxious to move this along to get it on our, in our code. Given that there may be future development in our village. And, you know, more and more, every time you turn on the news, there's about trees and how important they are, really. So I think it would be good to move this along if we can.
So what are the next steps to get it to the trustees?
Recommend it to the board for consideration.
To the board trustees? Do we need to vote on that? Do do people want to wait and see the updated copy or do we just want to trust that Natalie has the signs right on them?
I always prefer to see the final version.
Yeah, that's fine. So she'll send it out and we can, we can, please, everybody, take a look at the change in mathematical signs before the next meeting. And yeah, as long as everyone approves, we can, we can vote on it at the next meeting on August eighth and we to recommend it to the board of trustees.
That would be great.
They are, yes, she did. Yeah, her keyboard is not in a different language.
So is the diameter?
Oh, God.
The average diameter of the tree because trees are perfectly round.
I told them you got to cut it down to figure out what the actual diameter it is, so, yeah.
I think we should all get some calipers or something, you know, so that.
There you go. Those are pretty big.
A point per ring.
Oh, my word.
Cut the tree, a point per ring you get.
I think that sounds like the plan.
Change to a point system. This is like that old Discover Card commercial where you get points and you change them into rubles and then you change them into something and also before you get to use them.
No way for new tree to have a caliper more than two inches.
That's right.
Yeah.
Caliper has to be set, start. Caliper has to be set, start it too. Or else it won't work.
A new tree.
Only a new tree, no matter what size.
Well, that's where new tree, we're having them. Oh.
Has to be two inches, right? Or it doesn't count.
Yeah, but I'm saying, what if it has somehow a four inch caliper? We're still just giving it a one?
No, I a new tree. Where where are you reading?
At the chart. This is Simon's chart.
Yeah, if you take a look at the that chart that that Mike just.
Oh, new tree. Oh, golly.
Oh, Natalie. And I think it's up to him. I brought this up. He said that you just can't get a new tree bigger than two calipers.
Well, sure you can.
But I don't believe it.
Yeah, you can.
You can get a new.
I don't, I don't think you can get a new tree that's 24 inches in caliber. That would be a bit much, but.
Oh, no, he's simply saying a new tree must meet a two inch caliper.
All the other treatments are for existing trees.
Right. What if somebody, what if somebody goes out and decides to plant a tree with a four inch caliper, a brand new tree, four inch caliper? Do we only give them one point?
One point.
That's their prerog- yes.
Okay.
All new trees are just one point, no matter how big.
That's what I'm reading.
But I'm gonna say, is that what you want to do?
Why not?
Would it encourage people to plant bigger trees? Yeah, or just be like, fine, I'm gonna do, right. Do we want to encourage people to do the best they can with trees? Or do we want somebody to look at it and say, fine, I'm going to do the bare minimum. I'm planting two inch trees everywhere.
Yeah.
Or wouldn't it be nice for them to plant maybe some larger caliber trees if there was a benefit to them point wise? Sorry, tree, tree unit value wise, I'm sorry.
Over six inches.
Well, um, an existing tree.
Yeah.
Is four inches is still only one.
Yeah, you said like.
That's that's what Natalie just said. Yeah. Go ahead, Mike. Hang on a second. So Mike, Mike has a, Mike has a comment.
Just give them like one point per two inches or a half a point per inch.
Not 1.1 tree units. Okay. Yeah, but I I think that Natalie's right, like, you know, to get up to anything over, to get up to even a 1.5. You know, for existing trees, it's greater than or equal to six, but less than 12 now. I don't think anyone's going to really be looking at this and planting new trees with between a six and 12 inch caliper.
No, I was gonna say, I think if somebody really wants to do that, they're doing it for themselves because they really.
Yeah.
And and good for them that they can afford it, but I think this is a fairly standard. Uh, si- size, frankly, from some ordinances I've read. And I think, you know, at some point, I suppose, you know, to get a tree that's really big. That's not been planted yet is kind of weird also sometimes. I mean, it's just a whole different category, I think. And level that maybe. We don't need to go to. I don't know.
I'm 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 fine with the way that it is. It was it was a good thought.
It was a, it is a good, it's it's.
Okay.
About incentive like double point Tuesday.
A two for, okay.
I see we've digressed a little bit. Is there any other discussion about the reveal, review of the proposed tree conservation and replacement law? Okay, Jim, anything you wanted to share?
Nope.
Okay, Lisa?
Not anymore on this. Nope.
Okay.
So next, we're gonna vote on this next time, right?
Yeah, yeah, Natalie will get the fresh copy out. Everybody, please take a look at it to make sure the math is appropriate. And there's no decimal points anymore and we will, we'll vote on it at the next meeting, whether or not to make a recommendation to the board of trustees.
And our next meeting is the August.
August, right? August 8th. Yep. And so while we can talk about that at the end, but the next item is the continued discussion on code update. Natalie or Mike?
Nice to see you.
Cop proposed like special permits.
To be honest, I apologize. I've been inundated with plan reviews and complaints for two weeks. I haven't done anything. I'm sorry. I brought shame upon us.
Yeah.
A trial.
Child was last year and.
But I did win my trial.
There you go. Okay, well, we can, obviously, that's kind of a standing item on the agenda, so we can talk about it more next time. Um. Trustee report.
That was me. Yep. So July the 18th. It was an interesting meeting. Basically, the thing that was the things that were most important to us out. So there was the local law of records changing code language, budget transfers. Apparently, the village is going to get $2,500 back for some sort of errors that Verizon made in, I don't know. Audit recovery settlement. Um, and then some of the stuff didn't happen, but. Um, so one of the interesting things is is they deferred a Ithaca Coffee. Has is planning to up. Uh, change their offerings from just beer, the beer company part, to beer and liquor. And they waived the, was it 30 day?
Day notice requirement.
Yeah, so that was the, but the most important part was the public comment. And that was when Mr. Sarah Sorrow, who came to us at our last planning board meeting. Uh, took the advice of the planning board to go to the trustees. And made quite a of a presentation essentially to the trustees about the ongoing and. Pretty serious things that are going on at university apartments. He was then joined by the pastor from the church there and I didn't quite get his name. I know Mike can tell us what his name was, but.
Steve Felker.
Thank you. Um, there's just all of these things that have just become very, very much. More awful in the past couple of years. Um, they they just called it a shift in the atmosphere. There's this illegal dumping. There's homeless camping. There's, I think he mentioned the things that they're finding, you know, abandoned needles and that sort of thing. Um, continuing issues with the dumpsters not being. Really empty, they said. And just. Just more of what we heard. Um. The issue partly too is, and I remember when we were, Jeff and I were working on the conference to plan. The university apartments is one of the only. Basically apartment complex in our area that has affordable rentals. And as a result, you know, you have people there that probably are afraid to speak up. Um, because they're afraid they might be thrown out. Um, the issue of what's going on at the Econo Lodge also came up. Um. And just in general, what are we going to do about that? Now, there seemed to be a lot of discussion about what. Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. Can I ask what's going on at the Econo Lodge?
Um, what's going on at the Econo Lodges is I believe it's DSS. They're putting DSS. Recipients, or I guess, what do you call them? Um. They're housing them there. And it's kind of become just this a place for them. The county is putting them there. And this is stuff we don't have a lot as a village have much control over, as I understand it. However, um. In terms of the university apartments. Uh, what was then decided was the trustee suggested that. The landlord be invited to come to the. Next trustee meeting and hopefully the next trustee's meeting. And they suggested they also invite the sheriff so that we could hear from the sheriff. There's this increasingly. Um, numbers of of. Calls to the sheriff just, just this year alone, you know, they they just already like doubled over last year. So, um. It turns out that Jeff Dobbin, because of his affiliation with the business world, knows the landlord in some capacity was going to extend an invitation. And. So that's what's going to happen is we're going to invite the trustees from the, from the standpoint of the. Planning board, though, it seems that there's got to be something that we can do. And I know, where's Mike? He's not there. We're, oh, no, he's sitting there. He's here. Yep, I it's so different when you're here looking at this and I I'm looking and no, you're not up there in your spot. Um, so. I mean, what is, I then looked at our code and I thought, gosh, they kept saying how we, this couldn't be done and that couldn't be done. And that just doesn't work for me, sort of. There's got to be something that can be done. Um, in some way. Now, I know, Mike, that you've had. More than your share of contact with this facility. I mean, is it just increasing? Is it? What's going on there? Can you fill us in at all?
Well, since I've been here, there's been quite a bit, quite a few violations. And mostly the cases, well, actually, all the cases, they correct the violations, but they'll do the minimum that's required to correct the violation. Um, I have, since the trustee meeting, I have met with mayor. Um, and I have met with a couple of other people to try to find out if there's anything that can be done. I know that. The code office itself cannot fundamentally change. What's happening in either the Econo Lodge or university apartments or any other place. I can write up violations. Um, and there are violations that I have been writing up. Um, but I cannot, those violations can't change what the owner has a right to do. Um, in his own, you know, his own property.
Right.
So it's 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 kind of, I'm kind of restricted on what I can actually do. Um, something, I feel something has to be done from. Somebody higher up or the village itself get together and and do something. I. A lot of it has to do with. You know, the law and what what can be done that way. I mean. It it but it but as far as I've been trying to explain that I can't, I can't do it. I can't change it. Um. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to push the, I'm not trying to push it off on someone else, but there's only so much that I can do as far as code wise. I can keep it safe. I can. Make sure, I can make sure. Okay, Brett?
Yeah, I just to kind of get support what you're saying is, as a code guy. What your relationship is is with the property owner only. And you don't have a relationship with the occupants. And so what you're saying, I think what you're saying is, is that you can only just do so much to enforce against the property owner. But it's the tenants and the occupants who are the ones who create the. The difficulties in terms of things that they're doing and how they're acting and. Um, how they're interacting with neighbors and that type of thing.
And and another thing, Lisa, is it, well, not just, not just Lisa, is for example, if a. If a tenant has, uh, living in a, their apartment that's inhabitable. And they call me to, hey, please check this out or that, check that out. And I go there and I find that it is inhabitable. I placard the place, they're out of a place to live.
I know.
It's a, it's a terrible vicious circle.
Correct me if I'm wrong. If you go to inspect the building, the tenants don't necessarily have to let you into their dwelling unit.
No.
So you can only inspect the common spaces. And the building code is a state code. We can't amend that. Enforcement provisions are only useful if they fail to correct the violations, which Mike says they routinely do. So Mike is really handcuffed and is doing everything he can. And so I don't think his office is a place to look for answers here.
They either have to let me in or I have to see evidence of imminent danger.
Well, one of the things I, so I went through our code book, actually, sort of a, all sorts of other interesting things. Like there are things that weren't there that it said it was, but, um. There were a couple of areas, though, that I thought about, like, for example, I know that the dumpsters is a continuing issue. And I thought, well, can we change our code in any way so that, let's say you. I get, you know, you have to cite someone more than. I don't know, once a month or what. Can we set up things like if someone is cited more than five times in the first blah, blah, blah? That the 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 penalty doubles or something? Can we do stuff like that?
We had spoken about doing something like that at one time, but. A lot of these complaints, like, for example, you pick the garbage out, that has gotten much better since. We've given him a couple of violations on that and I spoke with their manager. And he has had the trash company come, I think, twice as much now. And it doesn't seem to be overflowing as much. It that seemed to have worked, but I understand what you're saying, like a repeat offender.
Yeah, that that I mean, I was just.
I don't know whether that's.
Is that, under law, you have to give them the 30 days to correct. So I don't know, just merely them offending, then counting against them, if that would be. A due process error. I've looked at many other municipal code enforcement provisions. I haven't seen anything. For a multiple offender provision.
Does our fee schedule come from like?
The fees can be changed. I mean, our fee is higher than others, slower than some. Brent has a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Brent.
Yeah, a couple of ideas. Um. First of all, if you don't have the court working for you. Um, you could have whatever fines and fees you want, but if you're, if the court isn't willing to. Uh. Render decisions in the village's favor, then the fee, the fines mean, mean nothing. And the thing is that. Something to consider is. Uh, some, I've seen some ordinances that are written in a way that say that violations are. Considered each day is its own violation.
Ours is that as well.
Ours, ours does.
Yeah.
Ours has that.
Yeah.
Um, well, I took. And then I I remember, gosh, I don't know, was it six years ago? Marty, we started down the pathway of trying to get some sort of code on the books to deal with the abandoned shopping carts. And it got pretty, it's got so complicated, we did not go through with it. But so when I came to this section about vehicles improperly parked, I'm thinking, well, so what's the definition of a vehicle? But I thought, well. Is there something about that that we want to revisit? Because that is an ongoing issue. Um, but I don't know, there just has to be something. So hopefully by meeting with the landlord, if he will do so. Um, and with the sheriff, maybe we can come up with some. Some answers, but it, you know, the hard part is, is I think in a different situation, we might be able to get tenants to kind of do some sort of grassroots kind of thing. But it's the kind of demographic that is there. Is is you, we don't want them to lose their home. And I mean, it's a really a complicated issue, but it's just. Not right. Some of this stuff is just not right. And I don't know what our, so, you know, we're not alone in having people. Homeless people camping out and all that sort of thing, but apparently that's also going on. On the church property and behind, behind the apartment complex and. That sort of thing. The other thing that came up. Um, was that the Econo Lodge is being, the the pastor mentioned that the Econo Lodge is being used as an extended stay. And therefore he thought perhaps there should be, there were some state regulations. And I do recall, Mike, Scott, when we went over to look at, there was a possibility that they were going to sell the facility to the. To the county or somebody about, and I said, where's the sprinkler system? Is that still an issue for an extended stay facility? Do you know?
Well, they don't, they're not required to have a sprinkler system. Um, because the, they're still on the code where the actual building was built. They have not done any renovations since the building was built, so they can't, they don't have to bring up everything up to the current code.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Um, and beside that, at that time, during the code that they're under. Um, I believe that their separation walls are what was required at that point, which is what they have. If you look at that building, you'll see almost like a parapet coming up, separating different sections of the building. And that is their firewall between the units. Um, back to what you were, back to what you were talking about, Lisa. Um, one of the the bright spots are the the actual property managers that I work with are very responsive. To if I call and say, hey, look, this has got to be cleaned up or this has got to be done, they actually do it rather quickly. Well. The, I guess, the bad part or the. The the. the, I guess the bad part, or the, 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 the not so, not so bright part is, um, you know, you're only hitting smaller areas at a time, you're not changing anything, you know, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, I, I don't know, I, I think, Mike, um, Baker, you're up for August to cover trustee meetings, right?
I am.
So there, uh, next Monday, maybe there'll be some excitement in that regard, I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Mike, uh, no, Ronnie did send out an email late today to the Board of Trustees with a link to an article about municipalities banning camping outside. Um, it was held to be unconstitutional, uh, as, um, cruel and unusual punishment for persecuting people who have nowhere else to go. Um, but I am gonna look into the decisions to see if there's any workarounds in there, or ideas that the court may have offered that wouldn't be cruel and unusual punishment for statute ideas, so certainly the board is working on it, and, and Ronnie is researching it, so I'm sure it'll come up at the meeting.
But so, is the, has the landlord been invited, do we know?
I haven't spoken to Jeff, and as far as I know, Jeff hasn't emailed an update on that, at least copying me. Uh, Susan, have you heard anything from Jeff?
No, no, I haven't, that's why I'm covering tonight, so, for the board, so I don't the status of that.
I think it's a, your question.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, do, we know who the landlord is, or is it somebody local?
He is, I forget the name.
Uh, Michael Pitchel.
Oh, Pitchel.
Pitchel.
And he is, he is local.
Attorney down in Ithaca.
Yeah.
I recognize the name.
He's an attorney, I don't, I don't know, but the best of the population.
Pitchel, I thought it was Mitchell, you know, when you're sitting out here, you don't. So, okay, so Mr. Pitchel. Well, we'll see where this goes, but, you know, it's just a sad reflection of what's going on in our society, these people don't have places to go. And it's, it's just sad, it's a mess. I don't know if there's anything, but I keep thinking, we gotta just keep trying, because it's just, to me, it's not acceptable that we can't do anything, there's gotta be something we can do. But it is encouraging to hear that at least the property managers are dealing with at least the facility, so that hopefully the tenants are reasonably safe. But at any rate, that's the update from the trustee meeting.
Okay. Um, I was going to bring up two things, one, um, I have the August trustee meeting, so I will be there, I guess three things, two, um, obviously, you all saw that the governor extended the remote meeting, uh, emergency order, which is why there's only two of us here, and other people are online, but, um, and that, so that goes through the next meeting, so, uh, Lisa, you're gonna be remote at the next meeting, right?
Yes, and then I will be with you again.
Yeah.
I'm looking, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody.
Are you gonna be remote at the next meeting too, Jim?
Um, I'm, at this point, planning to be physically present at the next meeting, but that, you know, thing, things could change, but that's my plan at this point, to be there physically. Although I have a feeling also, the government, governor's gonna extend her order, just from what I see about numbers.
Yeah. But, okay, uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is, um, Lorraine is here, and Lorraine is somebody, um, who was interested in um, potentially joining the board, so, um, she got ahold of Mike and got the meeting invite, and her and I chatted, so, um, welcome, Lorraine, thanks for hanging out with us.
Thanks for having me, Mike, this has been really interesting, and, um, the, the last fifteen minutes, um, I've had a hard time keeping my mouth shut, because, Lisa, for a long time, I lived at the Meadows. So, I, I lived at the Meadows from two thousand and six to two thousand and nineteen. Um, the last few years I lived there, the Meadows started to get really bad, so it was time to leave there too, but I remember one thirty-four Graham Road very well, and all of the issues you're talking about have been going on for many, many, many years. The garbage, the, the, you know, the crime going on down there, the camping in the back, so that, what I was wondering is, are they also camping on Conifer's property as well as the church, and?
Yeah, as, I, I, I don't honestly quite know the lay of the land, but yes, I, I understand there's just this general problem in that whole back there. And, um, you know, the, the neighbor of Mr., uh, it was Sarah, Sarah's, what's his last name, Ken? Um, Kip, he, you know, he's right there next to the driveway that goes in, so it's, he has his house right there. I know.
How awful, I know, I always have thought, how, you know, when I used to drive down Graham Road, I'd always say, "Oh, my gosh," I always felt sorry for the, that really nice house that's across the street, and then, of course, the house next door, and I remember when those people bought the house next door, one of the first things they did was put up a fence.
Um, it's really funny that you should say this, I, I've just, I, well, this won't be included in the minutes, but when we first came to Ithaca and looked at houses, which was like twenty-some, eight years ago, or whenever it was, we looked at that house on the corner, that beautiful house across the way.
Mm-hmm.
But I had had a bad experience where we used to live in Massachusetts, and I said, "I don't want an apartment complex near me, I don't want, I, I want more space." It was, what, we dodged a bullet, apparently, in that regard, because it was a beautiful home. But yeah, and it's just, but it, my conflict truly is, is that it is one of the only places where people can afford to rent. I mean, I mean, as I understand it, for example, the, the complex, if somebody wrote me and said they wanted to know about those apartments that Mr. Getzman was talking about earlier, and they said, and I don't know if this is true, maybe somebody else can let me know, whether it's in the paper or whatever, that they're charging three thousand dollars a month for those.
Oh, I'll bet you they are.
And that's, I mean, I mean, that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year, I just, which, if you go with the twenty-eight percent of your income, you know, you can take it from there, it's just, so, this is one of the few places where people, and, and I'm su- and they have, you know, we used, I used to work near there, we used to walk a lot. And so I know that these are, the demographic is just different, but they need a place to live.
Yeah.
And so it's, you don't wanna just pull the plug on the whole thing, but it's not just the apartment complex is a problem either, I think there are other squatters coming in from other places as well, it's unclear to me.
Yeah.
But I know that if we hear from the sheriff, we'll probably get a better picture of what's really going on.
Well, like I said, the place has always been really bad, it's been, always been really bad over there, and the garbage issue, I remember when I lived at the Meadows, and this is back in like early years when I was at the Meadows, the garbage problem was so bad that the rats, there's a lot of rats over there, the rats were coming over to the Meadows. So the people that were managing the Meadows were furious. Um, and I'm, and then there were squatters that were living in that back corner area also, um, and they used to call the sheriff all the time, um. Yeah, so.
I guess.
I remember when I moved to Ithaca in the eighties, um, about the mid-eighties, and it was called the Covered Bridge Apartments at that time.
Oh, I, yeah.
Yeah, and I remember I was, you know, asking people, you know, for suggestions where to live, and several people said to avoid the Covered Bridge. And then, a couple years later, a couple friends and, I had one or two friends in grad school who lived there, I was over there, and it was really not a place that you'd wanna live, unless you had to.
Yeah.
For term of that, that's, that's thirty-five years ago.
Yeah.
It was kind of a problem property.
Yeah, yeah, I think, oh, and, yeah. And Michael Pitchel, he's a, he's a slumlord, you know, he's, I mean, he, I remember him when I, I mean, him and his wife, she used to teach, she used to teach, um, in the local school district, I think they're long divorced, but he's been in Ithaca for like, ever, like, ever, ever.
All right.
Not, not to be rude, yeah, not to be rude, but I am, I am, cut folks off on this conversation.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Um, though, um, Natalie did look on Zillow, and it does appear that those units are renting for roughly three thousand dollars, so.
Pretty amazing.
Meadows.
The Winting Meadows.
Yeah. Um, did anyone else have any topics, any topics they wanted to bring up or anything, Lisa?
No.
Jim?
No.
Pat?
Nope.
Mike?
Negative.
You sure?
Sure.
Positive?
Why, is there something else?
I don't know.
I forget.
We've got fifteen minutes, guys.
Natalie?
No.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Pat, oop, motion by Pat, second by Lisa. Time, eh.
We gotta vote, if we vote, oh, wait a minute.
On favor?
All right.
There you go.
I, I do have one other question, though, that has, one of the things that I noticed at the meeting the other night, um, what Natalie, maybe you can answer, is that they said that Jody wanted a roll call for attendance?
I think there was a, that was a request of a community party attendant at one point.
Nope.
Uh, that they do a roll call.
Oh.
At the giving.
And I was gonna say, is that something we're supposed to be doing?
You can.
It's all recorded.
Yeah.
I was gonna, I, I just wondered if there was some.
No, I don't think it's a.
Oh, okay, good. All right.
Well, thanks, everyone, we'll see you later.